All right, good morning. It is 11:00 AM Wednesday, March 12th. Special City Council meeting. Like the call meeting ordered and noticed that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, would you mind doing roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Carroll, Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Goshen.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Yep.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Streitman.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. First item of business is a business license revocation hearing for Twenty Twentieth Avenue. Nicole, would you mind swearing in? Or Douglas, do you want to do ground rules first?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. We don't do this very often, so I just wanted to kind of set the ground rules for today's meeting and go over with you the procedure that we would expect the group to follow. And as you've mentioned, you're here for, to have a revocation hearing for the business license for number 20, Twentieth Avenue. And this is specifically called for by Section 7, 115 of the city's business license ordinance, specifically states that when a licensee has five or more complaints of unlawful activity within a single calendar year that are determined to be founded by the police department, that triggers this hearing. So that's, that's the purpose of us being here. For this hearing, we would expect for anybody, the council will really be acting as a quasi judicial board. If there's an, if there's an appeal of this decision, it would go to the appellate courts. So we prepare as though this could ultimately end up in the court. So it's a little bit different from your normal procedure. So I just wanted to go through that a little bit. There will be a swearing in of anybody planning to give testimony. City clerk will handle that. There will be a presentation of the matter at hand by city staff. I'm here to kind of explain the business license aspects of it. We also have the police department and the short-term rental clerk to answer any questions, technical questions about exactly what's happened. There will be an opportunity for a presentation by the property owner or his agent or manager. Each of those presentations, we would hope, would stay to 10 minutes or less. There then will be an opportunity for clarification or rebuttal from the city and then rebuttal from the applicant. So they'll, they'll go back and forth a little bit of just providing you all the information. You all are free to ask questions along the way. And then generally, we would expect that once you've, once you've heard all the information that you need to hear, you would deliberate amongst yourselves. And then ultimately, the product out of this meeting would be a vote from you all to either revoke or not revoke the license. We would expect you to specifically set, if there is a motion to revoke the license, that you would set a time period for how long that revocation is to last. And then after that, there will be an order that will, that will include some findings of fact. So we would, we would hope that you will, based on whatever determination you make, that you would include your findings of fact in turn, to support why you're making the finding that you are. So that's the, those are kind of the ground rules and the expectations. Any, any questions about that?
With the terms of revocation, do the regulations say either six months or, no, it can be anything we want?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? So if nothing, we would ask that anybody giving testimony get sworn in.
For those of you that are giving testimony, could you please raise your right hand? I swear to tell the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Douglas, you want to kick us off?
Yes. So as has been mentioned, the address is number 20, Twentieth Avenue. This property has had five founded complaints. And as I mentioned in seven, in Section 7-1-15, specifically five founded complaints, triggers the suspension, which has happened pending a revocation hearing, which is why we're here today. The, this, the property in question is a four-bedroom house. The city's maximum number of vehicles is dictated by the number of bedrooms. And for this, for this property specifically, it's four bedrooms, which translates to a maximum number of vehicles of four overnight. And at this property, we had, we have had on January 20th, I'm sorry, January 10th at 11:15, the property had five parked vehicles in violation of the code. Two days later, January 12th, also at 11:00 PM, the property had 12 vehicles.
Douglas, was the first one also PM?
Yes, sorry, 11:15 PM. Two days later, 11:00 PM, 12 vehicles. Then January 29th, 11:59 PM, the property had six vehicles. January 30th, 11:00 PM, the property had six vehicles. And then most recently, February 7th, at 11:12, the property had six vehicles. You have in your packet the, the reports for each of those incidents. There also is correspondence there between the city's code enforcement officer and the property manager, in this case Avant Stay, contacting them, making them aware of, of the situation as it kind of progressed and got closer to, to the five, the five violations. So in a nutshell, I mean, it's a very simple case of too many vehicles, too many times, which, which has us here. And I'm happy to get into the details, but, but I would be also happy to let the applicant explain, give their side of events.
Thank you, Douglas.
Good morning. Dane Derbyshire, I'm representing the, the property owner. I, we have our general counsel, Brian McCardle, here who will go into some more of the details as well as Sarah Quinn from Avant Stay, the property management company. But I just kind of wanted to say a few words to start. My family moved to Isle of Palms, I think in 1995. I grew up on 50th Avenue, so we're islanders for a long time. We understand the livability laws. We appreciate why they're, they exist. We obviously want to, we want to comply with those. We've owned this property for over 11 years. We, I think four or five years ago, hired Avant Stay as a property manager for this property, as well as a few other properties. And the reason we chose them, where they are a national company, they have properties all over the country, they have a number, a large number of properties here on the island. You know, our, our goal is to have some, a professional company with infrastructure to make sure we're complying with everything we should be and keeping everything under control for short-term rentals. We've, they've been managing this property as well as a few others for us for, like I said, a number of years. We really haven't had any issues. These issues have obviously popped up in pretty rapid succession in the first part of this year. We weren't really aware of them. I think a couple of them, and Brian will get into some of the details as well, happened, same guests, very, very quick, rapid, very quick succession, like multiple offenses, which we can kind of go into. But I think we were formally, we were formally notified in, after the fourth violation in early February, end of January. We immediately reached out to Avant Stay. We connected them with the police department. We then started discussing with them, like what's, what are causing these issues and what needs to happen to make sure this doesn't keep occurring. And Sarah can kind of go into some of the, I think, measures they've taken, which have gone above and beyond to prevent this from occurring in the future. I think we're happy to say this hasn't happened since the final, the final occurrence, which was in early February. So it's been over a month and we haven't had any, to my knowledge, any known issues. And I guess what we, what we're here today is we just want to kind of give you some of the facts and then just, you know, respectfully ask that we have the opportunity to prove to you all that the actions that Avant Stay has taken as the property management company, you know, prove, prove, prove our, prove it out, that we're, that they've taken the right measures to make sure this isn't an ongoing issue. And, and to the extent that you can, I would just consider again, we're obviously the property owner. We don't manage the prop, this property or, or, but at the same time, we're very committed to working with this property management company, being more involved to ensure this doesn't keep occurring. And to the extent there is some sort of punishment, I'd maybe think about how, how we can level that against the property management company versus the, the property owner. But again, that's just sort of some high-level thoughts that we had about the situation. Obviously, we're embarrassed to be here and not what we want, we don't want to see this happen. So we're committed to addressing it. But I'll let Brian talk about some of the details of the situation.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Absolutely.
You said you've owned this for 11 years?
Yes.
I think if I remember right, part of the time, it was a long-term rental, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
How long have you been short-term, had as a short-term rental?
I want to say for four years, or maybe four or five years. We, we started working with Avant Stay, I believe. I can't remember the exact date, either late 2020 or early 2021. They managed this property for us as well as a property at 1024th Avenue. So, and I, to my knowledge, we haven't had any issues like this over the last four years.
Have you had any issues over the last four years where you've had founded complaints?
I don't believe so.
None?
No. And, and I, I believe Avant Stay, and obviously Sarah can, can speak, but I believe they manage a significant number of properties across the island. So they're, they're well entrenched here on the island. They know, you know, I think this is a unique situation and there's some attributes to this property with a huge kind of parking circle that maybe invites this. But again, that's not an excuse. We're going to address it. But, but again, yeah, I don't think we've had any issues in the past.
You said you didn't know until the fourth complaint. Did the property management company know?
I believe they were notified after the second or third complaint. I want Brian.
Thank you.
McCardle.
Yep.
Speak as well. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Brian McCardle, in-house counsel. I've been with this company for about four or five years, so about the same time they became a short-term rental. To answer your question earlier, I believe there was a long-term rental that had a family in it for several years during the ownership. After they vacated, it was turned into a short-term rental about four years ago.
Could you, excuse me, you're with which company?
I'm with Ferndale Properties.
Thank you.
So I know that it was presented as easy numbers, quick case. There were five instances, but it's really just three rental stays that take place over the period of two, two events on one weekend, two events on one weekday period, and then two, or one event on one separate stay. If you look in your packets that are provided, there is a January 14th email in which Avant Stay has notified that there were two complaints over January 10th and January 11th weekend. The January 10th violation, it's my understanding that there was some kind of discrepancy over how many bedrooms the property actually held. I believe the chief enforcement officer, in his complaints, that originally it was believed it was a five-bedroom property. There were five vehicles on the property and there was no founded complaint at that time for January 10th. Later on, on February 3rd, an email was sent that said after review with the building, the appropriate permits to make the building a five-bedroom house were not completed, so that it would become a founded complaint as there were more cars than allowed because of the absence of that bedroom. In terms of the succession that Dame mentioned, there are two instances where two founded complaints occur on back-to-back days. Notice is not provided to Avant Stay until four days after the first instance. It would be our position that there is a chance, and a very good chance, that should Avant Stay or us as property owners know about the first violation, we can contact the guests, say you're in violation. We avoid the violation the next evening. The ordinance runs from 11:00 PM to 9:00 AM, so there are ample hours during the day that if there's notice provided, the owners or the property managers can contact these residents or rental guests and say, hey, you're only allowed to have four cars. Last night you had six. We need you to move two of the cars into public parking. They're not allowed to be there. You're going to get another visit by the police tonight if they're there, or we can remove them if they refuse to comply. On one instance, the January 29th instance, the police report in your packets state that there was not a renter that answered the door. So the complaint was founded, not reported to the renter. It was not reported to Avant Stay until February 3rd, in which case, on January 30th, which was a Thursday, the same group of tenants received a second complaint without ever knowing that they received a first complaint because they did not answer the door and the property manager was not notified. There was no way for ownership or the property manager to correct that violation before the next evening based off of those facts. So really, it, it's five instances in days, but it's these three rental groups. Notice is not being provided until after these groups have departed. I have with me the schedule for these guests, and I provided copies for all of you. If you want me to pass them up, more than happy to. You'll be able to see when the guests arrived, when they left, and the incident dates fall between those. So if you'll allow me, I'll come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just for reference for you all, Jessamine is the name of the property in Avant Stay's system for Twentieth, or 20 Twentieth Avenue. So you'll see, if you look at the bottom, that first group was there from January 10th to January 12th. That consists of the January 10th and January 11th complaint. There was a group there from January 16th to January 19th in which there were no complaints. There's a group there from January 25th to January 31st in which there are the two complaints on the 29th and the 30th. There's a group there from January 31st to February 3rd in which there were no complaints. And there is a group there from February 7th to February 9th in which the final complaint on February 7th was founded. Notice for each of these groups of complaints, the first notice for the first two complaints was on January 14th, so two days after the renters had moved out. The second group of complaints from the 29th and 30th of January, notice was provided on February 3rd, three days after the renters had moved out. And February 7th, I believe, notice was sent on February 12th of that complaint. So I am going to turn it over to Sarah with Avant Stay. She's going to talk to you guys a little bit about how we as a ownership group and property manager have worked together to kind of put some things in place to make sure these violations do not occur in the future.
Hi, my name is Sarah Quinn. I am a local here. I grew up in Mount Pleasant. I spent the majority of my life coming to Isle of Palms and, and enjoying it out here. I have managed for about 10 years, short-term rentals in the Charleston area, from Kiowa downtown and, and Isle of Palms as well. Avant Stay, we do have about 150 properties totally out here. I'm sure you guys might be aware, we merged with Beachside Vacation Rentals about two years ago. But my group, which is kind of our own market, the Charleston market, we are a small group of just 25 properties that we manage, 20 of them here on Isle of Palms. And we are a small group that kind of focus on special owners, specialty properties, kind of try to, I have three, three staff members and the four of us together run those 20. We do have the backing and support and partnership with Beachside, as well as our national brand as well. So when we first were made aware of this, again, after the guests had departed, my first immediate action was, we do have the property right next door, I think it's mentioned in here as well, 1620th, that we manage as well. Those two properties, we did have on a buyout listing where someone could rent both properties. And so my first action was to completely take down and remove that listing, the thought being that 1620th has a rather small driveway and this property, 2020th, has a very, very large driveway. So everyone would park. We were thinking at the one property and, you know, spend time between the two properties. But we immediately removed that listing, relocated all future stays or canceled them. So that was kind of my first thought and step was to take that down because it was causing maybe an over occupancy problem of, of all the houses, you know, one house having kind of all the cars at it. We then as well started sending a direct text message out between myself and every single guest that checked in, reminding them only four cars could be parked at the house. We have a camera that has been installed at the property since we have managed it, but we directed that to point directly at the driveway as well. And myself and my team monitored that camera in our evenings till nine o'clock every evening that a guest is in-house. We do that because we're trying to be cautious of, of this neighbor and, you know, the, the issues that, you know, the parking is, is causing for him. We additionally then have a 24/7 team with Avant Stay, that IT tech team that monitors that camera as well. So those things have been put in place, the, the 24-hour monitoring by our backend, did take a week or two to get in place, but myself and the team, we have ring camera access. We monitor that every time a guest is in and we message them as well when that comes in. We also have put street parking, like no parking signs out there as well. Our biggest thing is, is, is knowledge, right? And it's, you know, when we're not told about it until a guest departs, there's not a ton we can do at that point. You know, we have really almost more control over the guests than the city council does because we have their credit card on file, right? We can kind of enstrict fines on them. But, but if we're not made aware of it while the guest is in, there's not much we can do. Another thing my, my team and I are doing is I've instructed them that every time we start our day, the first thing we do is drive by, drive by the properties, all of our properties now, and look at the car, look at the car count. And then we end our day as part of our daily routine of before anyone goes home, driving by our properties. Obviously, sometimes that's five or six. This does not go into effect till later in the night. But that and the camera watching and then informing the guests and, and kind of putting stress on them and pressure on them that they will receive a fine from us if they don't comply, is what we have, you know, tried to put in place. In the meantime, I do believe it has worked. Again, this did happen very rapidly. We put those measures into place, again, relocating, taking down the listing, putting the additional, like camera in place. And yes, as far as I've known, there has not been any further issues since then. We, we want, you know, we want our owners and our neighbors and everyone to enjoy the city. And, and that's really my goal here, is to try to find a way that we can all live harmony, you know, in harmony together. And we, we want what's best for the neighbors. Many times owners of, of, you know, the, the community out here become our owners that we represent. So we want to do what's best for the owners, also for guests that come here as well, and, you know, the, the people that we manage for. So those are the steps that we've put in place since we've been notified.
You had mentioned that there's a second house. Was it next door? What's the address?
1620th, right next door.
1620.
Yes, yeah. And I believe one parking complaint has been called on that address as well. That is another four-bedroom house.
Have there been, since you've been managing the properties besides these instances, have there been other livability complaints on either one of the properties?
I have not been notified of that. I do, I think there was a noise one, I believe last year. There was a noise one that was found as like law, I think it stated as loud talking was, was reported at the house.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
I got a question for you. You, you mentioned that you put these things in for this, for the particular neighbor that's being bothered. Do you feel like this is this specific neighbor that's driving this or in, in general?
It is my, it's, yes, compared to all the other properties that we manage, it just, this does seem to be a specific issue here at this property.
With one individual?
All the complaints were founded by, and called in by one individual, yes.
Yeah. All right. You also mentioned that you, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you felt, you felt it was an expectation to be notified immediately so you could correct it. So you feel like it's the police departments that notify and manage your properties for you?
No, no. I, I just think a, a notice within 24 hours would be great, just because, again, many guests do stay, you know, this time of year, particularly, you know, three nights, just so we can correct it as soon as possible. You know, again, after hours, the monitoring system, we can go back and kind of watch all night, a guest parking, to see if, if cars came in and out of that time. I, I really do want to work, and this is what I'm hopeful for, obviously, as the, you know, the first time this has kind of come to a point is I want to find ways that we, not just as Avant Stay and the company I work for, but as property managers can do better for the local community. And I, I want us to find ways that we all think are, you know, that can actually work to make the.
It, it sounds like though, you've done that, right? You've put these extra measures in now to, to.
Yeah.
To be able to more closely monitor property.
Yes, yeah.
So it, it would have been nice to do that probably before the incidents, right? Not rely on the police department to call you within 24 hours of an incident, especially if they're on weekends or other things.
Yes, and I guess something that we could kind of look into, especially maybe as a general short-term, you know, rental, like alliance, is, is having someone just drive around to known short-term rentals at night to monitor cars, I think.
Someone from your company?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's the only other way I think that it could 24/7 be monitored without the police involvement, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks.
I guess I'm confused on the notice thing. So the first one, the checkout was January 12th?
Yes.
And there was a, there was an email from our code enforcement on January 12th at 2:26 PM to you raising this issue. So I'm not sure I get.
Yeah, that is the day they checked out. So the first one was on the 10th, and then they received one on the 12th, and that's when they checked out. I think this 12th date is incorrect as well. I think it was the 11th in the actual reporting of it, I believe. I think, was that correct? It was the actual, in the actual notice, I believe it was the 11th, and then the guests checked out the 12th. I'll go back through the.
So the point of, pretty quick notification from our police department to you guys.
Yeah, and so again, as soon as I was notified, we started, we, I took down, we took down and relocated all future guests there. There, those guests checked out, so there was not too much we could do with, with those guests at that time. But again, we immediately did take the steps to try to prevent it for future guests coming in.
Was this before the 12 incident for the 12, those two, 12 cars that were parked there?
The 12 cars, this, that was on the 12th, yeah. So yeah, when we were notified of this kind of group, group complaints, obviously, that was a huge red flag. Oh my gosh, two of them, the same weekend, were the first, you know, month of the year. What can we immediately try to do to, you know, make the situation better and increase monitoring, increase guest communication and the removal of the, the buyout?
Can you tell me what, what kind of communication or signage do you have at the properties to indicate that 12 cars and those kinds of occupancy?
Yeah, so we do have a, we have a, a sign kind of in the welcome, the welcome information there as well. There's a, there's a sign that's in the guidebook as well. And then there's do not park here. I think at one point, there was maybe an issue or a complaint that, that might be some parking on the grass.
So your tenants basically just ignored everything?
What's that?
Your tenants basically ignored everything?
Yes, it looks. Yes, it looks like that is, that is what happened. I do know that the guests each time did comply with officers and moved their vehicles.
To the Harris Teeter, I think, one of them, yeah.
Yeah, and we have provided all the, all guests at larger properties with off-site parking options in Mount Pleasant and other areas for larger groups that come in, just to be safe because it does obviously tend to happen with houses with larger occupancy.
So there were no tickets? This was just the police telling them they had to move their cars?
Yes, yeah, they were all just like warnings, citations.
But the one when nobody answered the door, what happened there?
There's no citation.
Go on, if you don't mind, thank you.
There are no citations issued for any of these. They're just complaint warnings is what it says on the complaint notice. To my knowledge, there was no contact made with that renter at all. It was just a founded complaint that there were six cars there and no one answered the door on a, on a attempt by the enforcement officers.
So those cars obviously weren't moved?
Correct, and they were there the next day when they received the second violation.
One other question that was, is this a four or a five-bedroom house?
So it is, I think it is in the zoning and what it is applied for as a four. There is a fifth room that is used kind of as a flex room that, you know, it is not stated in there as a fourth bedroom. So it just is kind of an additional, again, that plus two of the occupancy, it does still, occupancy rules still apply and are within.
And do you advertise it as a four or five-bedroom?
Four.
Okay, thank you.
When the, the buyout though, when we did have the house next door, then it became, it's kind of, and so I think that's really where the root of this problem comes is the buyout listing obviously is for two different houses. And so then it is, you know, an eight-bedroom with the other four-bedroom that's next door. So that was my first, obviously, I think that's the problem. This is a very large driveway. Everyone's cars are going into the one house's driveway. It is the larger two, just in space of the two properties. So I think maybe more time is spent in this particular property.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Got a quick question for you. So within three weeks, you had four founded complaints, basically?
Yes.
When were you all made aware of the first complaint?
On the 12th.
On the 12th?
Yes, I think an email was sent on the 12th, yeah.
Two days after the first complaint. At what, at what point did you all become really concerned with so many founded complaints in a short amount of time? And what, and what were you actually doing to prevent the over occupancy or too many vehicles on the property? Be more specific about that.
Yeah, so obviously receiving two as our first ones in one weekend was an immediate jump to action. And again, the immediate actions that were taken that kind of that week that within a matter of days was taking down and relocating any of the buyout listings and taking down that listing. We did already have always a camera there that was monitored when, usually the camera's there to look at when an issue is made known to us, but then we put in place kind of trying to monitor it in the evenings as much as possible. And then we, we did make sure too that then the additional messages sent to the guests kind of with their welcome message for this property, that was added starting after the 12th as well where we messaged them. And I even, I mean, I've got a screenshot from the one that on the 29th, the guest even acknowledges it and they say, got it, thanks so much. And then they had six cars there. So there's even acknowledgement from...
And again, you might have asked her this with someone else that I didn't quite get it, but how long have you been handling the property, Avantstay?
So I've been with Avantstay for two years now. I have been a licensed property manager in the Charleston area for 10 years, but I've been with Avantstay for two years. I was with Sweetgrass Properties before then.
Thanks. I'd like to follow up on that. It seems like, in my opinion, it's your responsibility to police your properties and that sending them an email to say, don't do that, isn't enough, that it needs someone to be there to check on it. And when you have a property that's a problem property especially, I would think you would tag it and pay more attention to it. It appears that after the incidents on the 10th, January 10th and 12th, especially on the 12th, when you had, I forget how many, but it looks like a lot of cars on the spot. The number of cars did drop to six at each, at the property. It's still two more than they were supposed to have.
And yeah, and so, yeah, example of that is, is, you know, the guest with the sixth violation then specifically being told that. I mean, we, I spend my evenings watching the camera now here at this property. So, I mean, that is, my team tries to go, you know, around to it. We start our day and end our day here. Again, the only, the only other two things that I have thought of that I can think of to truly manage this is to hire a patrol person that just, his job is to go around two properties all night long. And then also, again, I do think this, this driveway is very, very large and I've even considered trying to figure out a way to block a portion of it so that you cannot fit more cars in it. I mean, this driveway could easily fit 10 cars or 12 cars and it, without it even overflowing in there. So that was another idea is to get with the owners and try to figure out a way that we block a portion of it so four cars cannot, cannot be there. But I do think a kind of, an overall patrol not being put on the police department would be very beneficial, I think, for not just this property, but obviously any other properties on the island.
A quick question. Were these corrective actions you've explained to us, were these taken before or after you got the notice of revocation?
So the camera has always been there. The listing, having standing four cars on the listing has always been there. The kind of additional after-hours just watching of the camera is new since we were made aware and then the listing buyout taken down is new. And then we have little no parking signs there that that is new as well. Those were additional steps that we have taken.
Those were before the certification out there.
Yeah, yes, oh yes, yeah. They, those happened as soon as, like, you know, within the week that we were informed initially.
Do you have the cell phone numbers of the guests?
Yes, we do. And so that's who I even send those messages directly to from, from my number. We send them kind of a personal welcome message directly to their phone number on file. And that is who then I, we have kind of an automated welcome message that goes out and for this property and I've, our other larger properties, I've been sending out a message kind of at like five or six, once they've settled in, at four o'clock check-in, just reminding them of the, the very strict parking rules in the area and to please abide by that. And again...
Do they respond?
Yes, yeah.
They always do?
The one with, not always, but as even example of the one that had the six violations or the six cars on the 29th, they said, you know, thank you, acknowledged it and then, you know, proceeded to park their car there, you know, and it was 11 o'clock at night. So I do go to sleep at 11 typically, but we have even then reached out again to our, you know, kind of ring camera reps to see how this can be monitored literally through the night as well.
If you'll allow me, we have copies of the listing where it discussed parking, a sample text, actually the text sent to the 129 guest, a view of what the ring camera shows currently, showing the entire front of the property and the driveway.
And that was an adjustment, I guess, to the ring camera was a portion of the driveway we're seeing. It's usually just the entrance and front of the houses is usually where we kind of focus them on. We did adjust it to have a wider view of the entire driveway and not focus as much on the front entrance.
And copies of the signs that are placed on the grass and to keep, encourage people towards the driveway and then if we limit the driveway, we encourage them to only park where they can fit, where you can only fit four cars. So if you'll allow me, I'll bring these up.
I'm not, you know, trying to manage your business or anything, but it seemed like to me if there was a...
Thank you.
Trying to put myself in your shoes, but it seems like it was, if it started reoccurring, that maybe there should have been a management meeting or something and saying, we need to do something different. I mean, this is getting to be very serious, I mean...
There was, and that's where we kind of brainstormed ideas that we could put into place, like taking the listing down, like adding additional monitoring. Those, I mean, I kind of obviously love that discussion as the general manager of my group of three, but obviously my entire team was made aware as well as the Avantstay upper management as well on, you know, things. And that's, they, upper management brought up obviously the idea of trying to get someone to literally stare at this driveway 24/7.
This is very nice, what you wrote. I think you need to be a little more forceful. You will be fined if you park more than four cars at the house.
Well, and that, and that guest...
You will not get your deposit back or something.
That guest did say okay and acknowledged it. We had, we have had, again, we've been sending these out now to other larger properties and some of them are not always nice okay's back, in which case then it's kind of, you know, obviously it isn't a customer service. You kind of try to say it nicely first and then if it's not acknowledged or not adhered to, it, you know, it gets much stronger and that's, it would get much stronger if I was aware, you know, that it did kind of continue to happen that night. But we have had guests that don't just say okay and aren't really nice with it and we do make sure it's clear to them.
You need to get ahead of the problem, is what I'm telling you.
Yeah.
You can't wait until there might be, there is a problem before you ask them to change their behavior. Give them a reason to do it, to not behave that way in the first place.
So in the listing, it does show that fines and penalties are, you know, in place if it's not adhered to in the listing as well.
So there is, you all do have the capability of penalizing?
Yes.
Them if you, if you know about it?
Yes, yeah.
Well, you're, you're the one that's getting fined this time, so.
Yeah.
Douglas?
So just kind of minor points, but I just think it's worth making. We are not the owner of the property next door, so that we weren't really involved in those group bookings from like the ownership perspective. Obviously, they've stopped doing that after the first violation, but I just think it's worth noting that we didn't have any involvement in that as this specific property owner of these two properties that were kind of causing the problem, I think, when combined. And to your point, we were, we were sort of notified after the, not after the first complaint, they started taking action, but after the, I believe, really, we really notified of like this after the notice. And since then, that was my initial reaction is like, we need to be very stern about...
Yes.
Like in bold letters, like whatever the fine is that we can maximally put on them, like we, it's not really to our benefit, but they get that revenue, but it should be just put out there as like a, that's always to me the best deterrent. And so that's like a, you know, I wish we would have, I think we all agree, we wish we would have reacted with more steps more quickly, obviously, but those steps have been taken over the last several weeks. And like, and like I said in the beginning, we haven't had any, to my knowledge, issues in the last month or so, so I just want to make those couple of points. Thank you.
Just for a little context, I would say that the city's policies, and it used to actually be three violations triggered this process, but it has never been contemplated that the city would be handling kind of immediate notice and quite frankly, if we're there and we see something, that's already a strike. So the problem has happened. We haven't, we haven't kept that violation from happening. It's already happened. It already generates the strike. The damage is kind of done at that point. And I would just, I would bring to your attention, I think, Mayor, you referenced it. The initial, the initial issue that we have on record was January 10th, so 10 days into this calendar year. You only have five strikes for 365. One happened at 11 o'clock on the 10th. They were given notice, Avantstay was given notice of that within 48 hours. So Sunday, midday Sunday, an email went to them. So they didn't get it Saturday, but they got, they got notice over the weekend on Sunday. And then that very, that very night, there was a second strike. We find that when managers are aware now that they have two strikes and it's only 12 days into the calendar year, they only have three strikes for the entire rest of the year for 350 days. They only have three strikes and they've got to get through the summer. We find that that is where management companies get extremely proactive. They're, they're on the phone, they're vetting, they're vetting the customers before they show up, they're advising the customers of the situation that the property is in. And I think that's how, I think that is why we have so few of these, is that companies very proactively manage those strikes for the remainder of the calendar year. In this situation, you know, we had two, we had two within 12 days and then we had five within the month after that. So something was happening where, where the visitors were continuously not adhering to the city's rules. So it would be unrealistic to think that our police department could do that, could give instant notice, could give instant notice into a, into a house. I mean, they, they obviously did the best they can in knocking on the door and they will continue to do that. But quite frankly, at that stage, the violation has happened, the X is in the record and it's, and it's quite frankly, too late.
So what, what does the, in a situation like this, is there a document, like what is the, is there a, that's handed to the actual person that's staying there?
I think it's case by case. The chief is here if you want, if you want to get, you know, detailed into their process, but it's my, it's my understanding that the responding officer puts a note into the code enforcement officer that's, that's, that then follows up after the fact. So it's always happening, it really is pretty much always happening after the fact if they can't make, if the responding officer can't make contact at the, at the scene at that point.
I just want to, just to clarify the communication as well. It's in our packet here, I have information that, as you said, Douglas, that an email was sent to S. Quinn and T. Packet at Avantstay on the 12th notifying of the initial violation. And it doesn't appear that anyone even responded because a subsequent email was sent to follow-up verifying that they received it on the 14th. So there wasn't even any communication back saying, hey, sorry, we got it, we're going to be getting, you know, on it to it. So there was just like a lack of response whatsoever from the first thing. It doesn't appear until there's actually three or four that they started even responding back to the city. So I wanted to clarify that as well.
Yeah, that, that's correct. I do know that there are phone calls that, that happened after the 14th, but to your point, the, the original email on the 12th went, went unresponsive.
And that, that actually just reminded me of another question, if you don't mind. Does either Dane or Avantstay, do y'all have a policy of when you receive a complaint, responding and then responding yourselves, but then also notifying the owner? Is that something that your company?
So on, on the, the one after the 12th, there was a phone call to Tyler, my assistant, he's kind of the, my assistant area manager for Isle of Palms. He was in conversation on the phone with the local officer, enforcement officer. And then I have spoken with the officer on the phone several times as well. But yes, there is always when, when the guest is in and we have the ability to, they're still in-house, we do always reach out to them and let them know that this is an issue, that there has been a, you know, some, a guest or an owner or a complaint made against them, you know, no matter who it is, even if it's, you know, just someone walking down the street that calls us. A lot of, you know, a lot of other owners in the community have my direct phone number when they've had an issue and they, you know, will reach out to me so I can really quickly and not have to go to the police department. You know, I can quickly rectify it and we've seen that that's really helpful when we kind of work together and, and they're willing to work with us. That way we don't have to, you know, contact the police officers, we can contact the guest, we're the ones that have the kind of financial powers to put the fines in place on them. So I guess to my point, it wasn't that... So I guess, to my point, it wasn't that I want the police department, per se, to contact me, I'd like as a community together, to work together where the neighbor, or the resident, or the other guest that has an issue can contact us directly, because that's, that kind of cuts out the police officers having to go and do that. And we found that that and other, you know, situations across the island is, when neighbors are willing to work with us and speak with us, it is really helpful, and we all can kind of come to a good, a good spot where they're happy and we're able to take care of it, you know, further than the police officers can that are just giving them a warning. We can give them more than a warning.
Thanks.
Mayor, I don't know that I mentioned it when I went over the, the conduct of this hearing, but I, from my standpoint, that would be, we've, we've both presented our cases and had a chance to respond, there, there is a section, if you all choose to, if you choose to recognize unsworn public comment, if you all deem it appropriate.
Yeah.
I think we should.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Chris Egey. I live at 1420th Avenue, and I am the one who has made the complaints, although I have done many of these on behalf of, of one of my neighbors. She is elderly and of poor health, and she could not come today. She did type up something she wanted me to read. When Avantstay took over management of the property, I live directly two doors down, so I live next door to the other property that's, that they own. They put a pool in, and what proceeded to happen is, they would rent both out to large groups, and then they would all come over and congregate at that pool. The way my house is structured, my daughter's bedrooms are basically the distance from here to where you are. And so when people come over there late at night and are out in the pool and doing all those sort of things, they wake my children up. And so I initially reached out to Avantstay, they were, they were perfectly willing to hear me out, they gave me their cell phone number, call anytime. I called on it Thursday night, after some people came home, were out in the pool, splashing, doing all this stuff, and said, "Hey, it's just Thursday, and it seems like a party's starting," didn't hear back, and then that, that following Friday, the real party kicked in, and so I, I called, I, I called, I, the, the police at that point. My, I have tried to kind of let things go. I under, my understanding of the law was it was five complaints, and so I would really only call for the egregious stuff. Then last September, I found out that, no, it's five complaints over the course of the year. And so then it started to, then I started, so I had three complaints against 1620th over the course of that year. It was, it was not just noise. At one instance, there was a, a couple walking down the street yelling, he was supporting her. Three minutes later, another lady comes down the street screaming, "Keep up, keep up, keep up." They, the first couple went behind the house, the lady didn't see him go behind the house, and stood outside pounding on the door and cursing for five minutes, and woke my children up. So at that time, I did call the police. I don't, I don't like calling the police, and it's, it's not something that, that I really want to do. I, you know, really, after the summer, I, I didn't realize that I could call during non-quiet hours, so, you know, I thought I could only call after 10:00 PM, and I usually waited till 11:00 to call, because I wanted to give people some time to enjoy being on the island and have fun and that sort of thing. But it's very frequent where there are bachelor and bachelorette parties going on there. I'd say twice a month, the Sprinter van pulls up, 20 kids hop in, they drive off, they come back late at night, and sometimes they make noise, sometimes they don't. And so it, it has been a frustrating period. I had one instance where a tenant sat out by the pool, they built a little sitting area by the pool with a fire pit, they dragged a TV out there to watch a West Coast football game, they set up beer bottles, or beer cans, and were throwing them, trying to knock down the pyramid of beer cans. And my daughters are 12 feet away trying to sleep. So it, it's just been a real frustrating experience. And so at that, around September, I had three founded complaints against 1620th, and then I was, I was out walking with my neighbor on January 10th, and came across my neighbor on January 10th, and at that point, there were the 12 or 13 cars parked in the driveway. So she was like, "I don't know what to do," she was on the verge of tears, she's like, "We would move, but we can't even afford to go to Mount Pleasant, it's just too much, they do it all the time." And I agree. The driveway is very large, it can accommodate 10 cars. I'd like to read what she wrote, it's a little bit off, but she asked me to read it, and so I will. "Our short-street 20th Avenue has 20 houses, and five of them are Airbnbs of some kind. Another short-term rental and another, which recently sold, is undergoing major renovations." That's six out of 20 homes. Who knows about the one being renovated? "Two of these rentals are side-by-side 1620th, and families rent both of them. We can have eight to 12 vehicles at any given time for our houses. Once we add a large motorhome parked several days at 16th Avenue, another time over 16 vehicles for a weekend at 20. I've lived here since 1987, and I know exactly three people on this street where before I knew half my neighbors. Has anyone considered looking at the rentals on each street and putting a decent percentage on the number of them? Have you considered the quality of life of those who choose to live here permanently? How many of you are actually affected by this?" So, like I said, Donna couldn't be here today, but that's when I started making the calls. I, I would go out at 11:00 PM each night and call for her, and really, my, my goal was just to fire a shot across the bow, and let them know, "Listen, we can't keep having this." I think the buyout is going to really solve a lot of my problems at 1620th, because the whole, the whole party from 2020th comes over to 1620th, and they, they gather around the pool, and if, if those groups are no longer connected, I, I think that would, would go a long way for me, so it's, so I appreciate that. I, I do have some contention with some of the facts that were, that were mentioned here today. That house was marketed as a five-bedroom back in October, I believe, and so I believe they changed it sometime between October and now. I also had eight complaint calls, so I don't think all of them are not, are documented here, but I'd be happy to go through the dates, I have pictures of each of them, except for that initial call. And then after that, I did. But it was three separate stays where, where their tenants had violated that, that parking clause.
Just to clarify, you had eight during what period of time?
During the period of time that we're speaking of.
Okay. So from January till now, there's like...
January 10th, January 11th, January 28th, January 29th, January 30th, January 31st, February 7th, and February 9th.
And those were all for 2020, or they for both houses?
The initial, the initial call was for six, was for both 2020 and 1620, and then the rest were just for 2020.
And were they all for cars? Or were they noise too?
Yep. And so it, it has been a frustrating process for, for me, and for my family, and I just, I hope that we, we take that into, into consideration. I try to see both sides of the situation, and if, if I had a rental home that was going to pay for my kid's college education, and, and maybe the rental company wasn't, wasn't on top of things, and the tenants were just being horrible, or just ignoring the, the parking regulations, I, I struggle with someone losing their, their ability to make that money. But at the same time, something needs to happen where we can peacefully coexist. I also have some questions, because after the initial complaints, the tenants, I believe in the, in the late January, the tenants started parking the cars kind of behind the house, out of view, when there was ample parking up front. I don't know what happened there. I think it's a logical conclusion that someone said, "Hey, you can't have this many cars out front, and so put them out of view, and maybe you won't get caught." Maybe that happened, maybe it didn't, but I could view their backyard from my bedroom window, and, you know, it, I, I don't know why that change happened, but it leads me to believe that something was, was afoot there too, probably trying to avoid the, the number of cars that were allowed. So I thank you for your consideration, I definitely want to thank the police, they've been incredibly responsive, and I'm, I'm very aware that the rental income we receive from these, these homes helps pay for the police, and so it's, it's a tough situation. But I, I think working together, there is something that, there is compromises that can be made, and I hope that, that you will, you will take that under consideration, and I'm happy to give you guys my phone number, I know Tyler has it, but I haven't heard from him. And so, you know, I, I think we can, I think we can work together and come to, come to a conclu, a good conclusion, but at the same time, I don't know how you enforce the no-buy-out clause, so if there is a non-revocation vote today, and then they start buying out again in the summer, then we're back here again. That's what solves the problem for me, but there, there are things like that that, that I don't, I don't know. My, my goal for a resolution was, they stop renting the houses out to, to the same groups. I would love it if they were just seven-day rentals, and so you wouldn't have people coming here to party on the weekends and, and then head out. I don't know what, what those solutions are, if they are long-term, but I do want these two-party houses to recognize that there are young children next door that are learning new words that they shouldn't be learning, and, and they're being woken up in the middle of the night. And as a dad, having a, having a daughter come to your door and say, "Daddy, I can't sleep, they're being too loud," it's awful. So thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks.
Douglas? We'll just move into council deliberation at this point. I don't know, does anybody need to hear from chief or...
Anything to add, chief?
The only thing I would add is, it is our goal to notify as quickly as possible. We have not been as quick with it, because we've only had one code enforcement as opposed to two. That will be resolved within a very short period of time, so that won't be an issue any longer. But I also want to say, the rental company does manage many other properties on the island, and they are very responsive and work with us in, in those as well. I don't want to just cast them out as somebody who doesn't care, we don't have any issues with most of their properties, this is just one that we have, this is the first one since we've enacted this new ordinance that got to the five founded complaints.
My, my kind of question for myself is, is, it's more the, getting to the owner, because if, as a resident, if, if this happens to me, I am notified every time, because I'm the one who lives there. And as they've explained, you know, you're coming and you're telling someone who's there for two or three days, and they get some piece of paper, and they're like, "Oh, great, we'll put that in the circular file." And so I'm just, I'm trying to figure out a way that this, I don't know if there's, I don't, and I don't necessarily think it's on the police's side, but, but if there was something where the person with the most skin in the game, the owner of the home, knows about it, then I just feel like that, that seems to be a solution. And I don't know, you, you all will notify the property management company, is that correct?
That's correct. For the first offenses we get, unless it is something like a major party where it's, it's, and we've had those before, where we've contacted people in the middle of the night to come out. But normally, for something like this, we'll notify the property company first, because it's kind of like going and telling on somebody when they can still fix it, so that's why we've always done that, and it's on them, in our, in our view, to notify the homeowner. We, we did in the past, send a letter to both, and what that did was that kind of built some contention between the two, and that, that was contrary to what we were trying to do, we were just trying to get solutions fixed. And we can return to that if we, if that's what council would like us to do, but typically what we do is we notify the property management company, because that's who we're going to call in the middle of the night to respond out anyways, and give them the opportunity to fix the issue before we send a letter. Maybe we should have a policy where second, second offense goes a letter to both, we could do that, or if, like I said, if council wanted each one, we could do it that way, but typically, property management first.
Douglas? I would, I would just add to that, that we give the, we give them the option when they apply. Let us know who we should contact, and we, we put that in a field in our system, so they, they tell us, I mean, as you will, will recall, there've been discussions about this issue of, should there be required to be a professional property manager, that's been a discussion, but, but the policy has always landed on giving the owner the flexibility of, of making that judgment, but they tell us who they would like for us to contact, and that's, that's what's in the system, and that's who pops up as the point of contact.
Yeah, to me, it's not the police, it's not the neighbors, it's not the community that needs to monitor and police the rental company, the houses. It's the owners, and if they give that authority to a rental company, a management company, then they're the ones that we're contacting, and it's between them to get a hold of the, the owner if there's a complaint, it's not on the city or neighbors or anybody else. And they need to monitor their own homes for compliance.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's how the policy has kind of been generated. We, we want owners to have the ability to have an extension locally through a management company, but some owners, and sometimes they'll change, you know, sometimes they'll say, "It's been going to the manager, but I would prefer it come directly to me," and they'll change it in our system.
Thanks, chief.
From a council standpoint, comments or Jan?
I'd just like to say, this is not just about parking. Parking, the number of cars is an indicator, possible indicator of what's going on inside the house. And by law, we are not allowed to enter a house to find out how many people are staying there, because that's your private abode. So the number of cars is an indicator of that. So I look at this as more than just a parking situation, it's what else is going on around there. The second thing is, with other rental agencies here in town, they have been successful in policing themselves with, with parties that they have at the house, making sure that they don't have these large groups that, that disobey the rules every time. So I would suggest that that's something that is a strike against this group, this, this location here, where why is this going on time after time after time again? So that I would think that screening the tenant by the, the rental agency may be an idea of how to avoid this from happening in the first place.
Yeah, I guess that does, that does, I do have one more question, the, with all those cars, Jan, I think I agree with you completely, this is an occupancy issue as well. It sounds like the marketing may be to the larger groups of either bachelor or bachelorettes, and the combination of the two properties. What do you do to even screen the occupancy when somebody's applying for the...
So we actually, again, I have worked for other rental companies, you know, in this area, we actually do require photo IDs of every guest, you know, not children noted, but any adult guests, we require actual, to be uploaded into our system, IDs given of them, to verify age. So that is something that we do as a rental company, that I know other rental companies don't even do.
Is there an age that you will not rent to?
It's under 21, ours is under 21.
Were you pretty comfortable with that position, or are you thinking about raising it?
So I know Beachside, that was, that's Avantstay's general number, Beachside, I believe, is 25, and so it's been something that, with Chad, we've discussed, maybe moving, especially for Isle Palms, you know, to be conscious of the community here, to moving it to that, and I'm sure that's something we'd be very open to do.
God, did you have a follow-up?
No, I was just going to say, so when you had 12 cars there overnight, you clearly didn't have everybody's ID, I mean, I'm just, it just seems like there's a major disconnect here.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the, and I could go back and definitely submit for you guys the reservation of, I mean, oftentimes, the problem is, a guest will say four... of, I mean, oftentimes, the problem is a guest will say four. You know, four is they'll they'll book it with four guests, and we ask for, you know, the IDs of everyone that's on there. If it's only four, we do usually when there's a one and it's like a twelve-bedroom house, our team will reach out to them and try to get documented, ensuring that, you know, we've got one person down as this reservation. But when it's a, you know, four-bedroom house and it says four people, we we do not push it more than that to ask for IDs of of people that they're saying are not listed as guests.
But if it's a four-bedroom house with twelve cars in the driveway, and they have four people listed, they spend a lot of time moving those cars in each of them.
Yeah, and I and I definitely want to say that there is, by no means I would ever, you know, this is my job and my profession, you know, if if a guest, it's worse for me to deal with this than a guest that leaves in three days. I would never tell a guest to move their car to try to hide hide it at all.
You do have the ability to enter a house that's your rental property
Yes.
To see if it's being properly used. We don't have that ability.
Yes, yeah.
So that's something that I think you you have more control over than we do.
Yeah, and yeah, and when, you know, luckily, I've actually never even gotten to the point in over ten years of management that I've had to, you know, go and and enter a house for that because in in all my years of doing this, there have been ways with communicating with the guest, and we know that there's an issue, to rectify it. Again, we have financial pressure that we can put on them, that we are very happy to put on them when
Which we didn't.
We know, yeah. We could not, at this point, those guests had had departed already. So, and it stated there then. We do have obviously, you know, damage protections and waivers. It's something, actually, I think we're even still within the zone of it for these particular guests, that we could go back and retroactively kind of find them, just like for a guest damage in a house, I think it's covered under the same kind of fines and penalties there.
Rusty.
Thank you. On this island, we have a lot of discussion about short-term rentals for the past several years we have. And what we always come back to is, we have a balance on this island. And our short-term rentals are important to us because they give us income that we need in the city and to keep us going and and to take care of the, you know, the expenses that tourism generates, that sort of thing. So we do like short-term rentals, but we also want them to live by the rules. Because what we're really proud of is that we are a residential island that happens to have some short-term rentals. We want to keep that balance, but we want to have a good residential quality of life also. And so for me, it's a, I'm glad that we have residents who speak out when they have a situation where they've tried to handle it, and it just hasn't happened. And if they have to feel like they get to the point that they have to call the police, livability, and report something, that's basically what we want to have happen, you know, so that we could protect that residential quality of life, so.
And we want it to not happen, you know, I I want it to not happen in the first place.
And I know you don't. You're in the business to handle short-term rentals, and you want to
I'm stuck in
You want to make everybody happy. I, you know, I I I understand that fully. And I understand that many in this room either own other properties or live on the island or both, and that that's important to you also. But it just seems like what we've heard here today is we have a situation here that just has not been effectively addressed. And I guess my caution and warning, if you will, is that we need to be more proactive, like many of the rental agencies seem to be, and make sure something like this doesn't happen again. Because we look at our livability complaints month to month, and we don't, we don't have a lot of them. And this one just kind of stands out on its own.
Yeah, and I've I've never had to deal with this before, again, in ten years, so it was a new process for me. I do believe that I tried to take the the quickest steps that I could, again, in in finding what I think the biggest issue was, was the buyout. I think the big, you know, parking was on one side of the house, and the people stayed, like you said, with the pool. And that, once I was made aware immediately, was my first thing, and I think that has helped. Obviously, we've seen the cars have gone down. And then until then, it's just really trying to over-communicate with guests and, you know, find someone that will twenty-four-seven patrol it and patrol our properties.
Well, I'll just end by saying that enforcement of the rules that we have in place for livability is important to all of us that live on this island.
Yeah, and it's important to me and and to our owners. I I speak for my other owners as well. I know it's important to to all of them. So I think, hopefully, I think a lot of us, at the end of the day, we all have a similar goal here. And, you know, my my company and what we do, we are willing to, you know, abide by and try to think of any additional rules or things we can put in place to do that. And and we continue to to try to think, right, there's always, you know, guests continue to find kind of new ways. We, as a company, tried to put the ID checks in place, but of course, you know, just like with pets, there's always ways that people try to find around these things, and we continue to try to combat them with putting things like, we've got noise aware in all of our properties. It's required, the bring cameras are required of every one of our properties. So we we are trying to get ahead of it, and I I do apologize that in this case, it fell short of that. But I I think, hopefully, we're on a right path to to rectify it going forward. Thank you, guys.
And Douglas, council's got the ability to suspend, revoke revoke with conditions as we, I mean, that's the decision we're looking forward to come out of this meeting. Go ahead, sorry.
Not suspend, not revoke. Suspend, which would be, which is, you know, a very short, generally kind of a short timeframe. Revoke are are your options, and any of those can be with with conditions.
And for a certain time period.
And and we'd want to know the timeframe for whatever path you choose.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead. And Jack, I'm sorry, I can make one more.
Sure.
Sorry about that. Chloe, I don't think there's a need that we need to go into executive session for anything of what we've heard. I don't want you to.
I think just for a quick moment. I might have a question or two that we, that I would be interested in. Very quickly.
Just for a quick moment.
Yeah.
All right. Make that motion.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for a quick moment.
Second.
All those in favor?